Okay. All right, we will reconvene the special meeting. Mr. City Attorney, any final action to report out?
Good evening, Madam Mayor, no final action tonight.
Thank you very much. We will adjourn the special meeting and call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council on Tuesday, January 14th, 2025. Would the Clerk please call the roll?
Council members Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Roorbah.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Here. If you'd all please rise and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, any agenda updates?
Good evening, Madam Mayor. There is an additional information transmittal for items 16 to 17. On tonight's agenda, a copy has been previously provided to you and they are also available on the table in the back.
Thank you very much. That takes us to business from the floor. This is the public's opportunity to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. We're happy to have you here and hear what you have to say, but please understand that state law prohibits us from taking action or deliberating on items that are not on the agenda. So I think we maybe have one or two speaker cards. Madam Clerk.
You do. You have two requests to speak this evening under Business from the Floor. The first request is from Larry Ladd, who has provided a handout that I'll pass out, and the second speaker will be Brenda and Dan McNeil. So Larry, come on down.
Perfect, right here, Mr. Ladd. We do give you three minutes, so.
Indeed.
Short and sweet.
Well, short, yes. Larry Leary Ladd, one of the co-founders of the City of Ranch Cordova. Sarah and Barbara, no need for introductions there, we both go way, way back. From Mike from Chicago, howdy, I'm from Carbondale.
Hold on.
Anna from Ecotopia, Sohomish County, one of my best friends ran the Neighborhood Services in Everett. And Justin the Rotarian. Fortunately, there will be no gang conflict between Kiwanis and Ory this evening, but I do have YK behind me to back me up if things don't stay white shirt. Okay. So I'm here because back when Barbara was on the Planning Commission, she asked me to come up with examples of when regulation catastrophically failed and there were casualties. And I am not, I'm involved with the Community Advisory Group for Air-Jet Superfund Site Issues for the last 25 years, but I'm out of touch because I'm spending most of my time in Illinois taking care of my mom and my disabled brother, but it's too cold right now. My mom has a caregiver she likes, and so I'm here where it's warm. But the example I would offer, and that I can study in Illinois, was back in the 1980s when they were remedying Colthard and they created a cluster of neuroblastoma. And so I gave the gentleman there, what I do, my niche, is to keep following the science. And what I will be doing, there's a new, the folks, I haven't talked, this is a book by investigator there, personal injury attorney investigator. I, there's a new paper, the folks that I talked with at the Historical Society said folks got exposed at a dance hall 100 yards away from where the remediation was. That was the disaster. This is in 1980, so as Shelley Brant said, or Ranch Pro would say, it was a less enlightened era. So that's the kind of outcome you want to avoid. There's a new paper out, because it involves exposure before the children were conceived, there's a new paper out with a similar data to what I gave the gentleman there. And I will try and compile them together, talk to more people in Taylorville, and come back to you guys like in six months with a new and improved diagram. And I hope, like I said, we're meeting in Ranch Cove City Hall tomorrow. I hope there will be more meetings in Folsom because you guys are coming right up on the main site, like maybe Sarah at one of the elementary schools in your part of Folsom because you guys are where the action is now. Things are pretty stable in Ranch.
All right. Thanks for coming up.
Okay, our next speaker is, looks like Brenda and Dan McNeil.
Hello, members of the City Council. Thank you for allowing us to speak. The handouts that you're getting right now, the first page is a insurance, homeowner's insurance, non-renewal notice because we have a wonderful blue oak tree that our eve of our house is actually cut out to accommodate.
Its trunk.
Its trunk is. And 65% of the tree itself sits over our house. We have, this is just some of the companies that I have called that has, that have denied us, USAA, Lemonade, State Farm, AAA, Travelers, Progressive, Farmers, and even the California Fair Plan because we don't have that five-foot.
Which is on page two.
Zone Zero. We just came up with an article and it's called "The Five Foot That Could."
That could have prevented the Palisades, the five feet that could prevent the next Palisades fire, came out today?
And it's by Emily Pontecoro, that's P-O-N-T-E-C-O-R-V-O. And it basically is an article about that five foot that now the insurance companies wants from, from everybody. And we're obviously, the oak is protected, so we're not able to take it down. If we do, I understand it's $500 for every inch. Our tree's 43 inches across, it would cost me $21,500 if we were to take it down without a permit. This, we're only going to be one of the, you know, we're one of the first now that this is going to be happening to. It's going to start happening everywhere in California and I'm sure in Folsom. In the Baldwin Dam neighborhood, there are tons of oaks and pines and there's so many houses that have, that have trees within five feet or overhang their house. I mean, we need to take this tree down. If we don't, we can't get insurance. And even if we do get insurance, it's probably going to go from our $2,600 a year now to somewhere around $8,000 to $12,000 a year.
Governor Newsom passed a bill last, two years ago, it was supposed to go into effect two years ago, it was called Zone Zero. It's a five-foot clearance from your house of everything from bark, your deck, anything made of wood, wood fencing, everything must be five feet away from your house. It's any day that he's going to put that into effect. When he does, anybody in this room, if anything within five feet of your house, you will have to take it down. All of us.
And replace it with something.
If we can't get insurance, and right now even the California Fair Plan has turned us down, we will have no insurance, we have a mortgage. So we will lose our home and my business, which you guys have licensed inside of my home. I have a one-chair hair salon, very productive, awesome. Thank you for having us in town for 37 years. We've been in this house for 24. We've been members of the community for a long, long time. And we love our community and we love our trees and we love our tree. That's why we've spent so much money on it. It's cabled, it's a big trunk, it turns into three other trunks. We have had that cabled even to help support itself. We've spent thousands of dollars yearly on this tree to save it.
Thank you.
We don't want to cut it down.
Okay.
But we have to.
We, we have one of your cell phone numbers here.
Yeah, mine.
Yours, okay. I'm going to ask our interim city manager, Dan Haverdy, to contact you tomorrow, okay?
Yeah, I know Brenda has already talked to him.
I spoke with him earlier last week.
Okay.
But, yeah.
So hopefully, you know, any, anytime you guys can help us with this, it's very appreciated. Thank you for your time and your service.
Thanks for coming up.
Okay, you have no further requests to speak under Business from the Floor.
Anybody in the audience want to speak to Business from the Floor who did not turn in a blue card? Every other card we have, we believe goes to a specific agenda item. All right, we see no one running toward the podium. That will take us to the next item, please.
Your next item this evening is your consent calendar, and you do have one request from the public to pull item number 11.
All right, we'll pull item number 11. Does anybody else want to pull another item? If not, I will entertain a motion for items 1 through 10.
I make a motion to move items 1 through 10?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Council members Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Roorbah.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, that takes us, go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, item number 11. Lorraine Pajoni, if you want to come on down. This is resolution number 11321. This is a resolution initiating proceedings for the formation of an LNL Assessment District to be known as the Natomas Station Maintenance Assessment District 2025-1. Go ahead when you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Aquino, members of the council. Welcome to Justin Raythel and also Barbara Leary. Hello, Dan Haverdy, great to see you. My name's Lorraine Pajoni. I worked for the city for a little over 22 years. I was a landscape and lighting district manager for about 19 years and then the parks director for the last four and a half, now retired. That's why I'm wearing sneakers. I just wanted to, to explain how supportive I am of this item to continue to go forward. As the former landscape and lighting district manager, we recognized the need in Natomas Station about in 2007, and I brought it forward to our residents at that time. It was not a great time to be talking about any sort of assessment increases. There were several other districts that were also in need of an assessment increase, and so we moved forward a little bit after the recession and started working on those assessment increases. So just as we kick off, and I know this isn't early, early yet, but I wanted it to be publicly recognized that this district is indeed very much in need of an assessment increase. It's a little over 34 years that we've had the same $91 assessment. We're taking care of 21 art pieces, pavers, walls, fences, landscaping, streetlights. Just on my way here today, I saw at least two streetlights in my neighborhood that were out. So it is indeed a very much needed assessment increase from the public meetings that I've attended in the recent years, a couple of years ago. Definitely a good groundswell of support for this, so I don't see any issues there, but I just wanted the council to be aware that this, this is not a new issue. It's something that we, we've been aware of for a while. It's just, everything has its, its time to, to brew and, and for sure, Natomas Station is ready, so thank you very much.
Thank you for coming out, good to see you. Any questions, commentary? Council member Leary.
I'm just going to make a comment here. I'm going to recuse myself from voting on this issue while I await an evaluation from the California Fair Political Practices Committee to ensure that I don't have a conflict of interest based on the public generally exception. I've asked for formal review and written reply.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Then we will entertain a motion.
I make a motion to move item number 11?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Council members Kozlowski.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Roorbah.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Okay, that takes you to your one and only public hearing item this evening. This is item number 12, Alder Creek West Large Lot Tentative Subdivision Map Project. This is in the vicinity of White Rock Road and Oak Avenue Parkway in the Folsom Plan area. Before you tonight, we have resolution number 11318 determining that the Alder Creek West Large Lot Tentative Subdivision Map Project is exempt from SEQA and approving said large lot tentative subdivision map. I got you. I got it, don't, don't touch it.
Don't touch it, she said.
Now you can touch it, doesn't like me. Okay. Okay, good evening, Mayor Aquino and City Council. Jessica Brant with Community Development, and I'll be presenting the Alder Creek West Large Lot Tentative Subdivision Map to you tonight. So the project is located in the vicinity of White Rock Road and Oak Avenue Parkway in the Folsom Plan area, south of Highway 50. It's mostly surrounded by undeveloped area with the Toll Brothers Phase III single-family residential development sharing a portion of the project's southeastern boundary. The project site has multiple specific plan designations, including single-family, single-family high-density, multifamily high-density, multifamily low-density, parks, public quasi-public, and open space. Just a quick aerial view of the site. It is comprised of two existing parcels of 362.8 acres in total. So the proposed map is shown on the screen here, and I kind of tried to blow up the lot numbers for you a little bit. The large lot map consists of nine lots for future sale, development, and transfer. They range in size from .2 of an acre all the way up to 169.1 acres. The applicant is not seeking any development rights with this large lot map, and a note will be placed on the final map to that effect. Also, dedication of rights of way for the streets shown will be required at final map as well. So here's the proposed map and then a snip of the specific plan land use designation exhibit for the project area side by side. The proposed large lots are intended to separate areas that will be transferred to the city or school district from those that will be sold for further development. So proposed lots 1 and 2 would encompass all of the single-family, single-family high-density and multifamily low-density land uses. Proposed lot 1 would also include the future elementary school and neighborhood park sites. Lot 3 encompasses the future high school site. Lot 4 through 8 would be exclusively open space areas. So some lots, like proposed lot 1, include large areas that are likely to be further divided as mapping and infrastructure develop move, move forward in the project area. Others, like lot 8, are very small and will likely be merged into open space areas adjacent to, but not within this particular project area. The applicant anticipates that future small lot maps will further subdivide consistent with the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan, but if not, specific plan amendments or minor administrative modifications will be requested, they'll be required. So staff found that the project was consistent with the previously approved Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan EIR and does not propose any development. Therefore, it did not require any additional SEQA review pursuant to SEQA guidelines. Staff has determined that the proposed large lot subdivision map complies with all city regulations or requirements as well as the requirements of the State Subdivision Map Act. It is also consistent with the general plan and with the Folsom Plan Area Specific Plan. So as such, staff is recommending approval of the project as conditioned. The Planning Commission considered this project at its December 18th, 2024 meeting and did unanimously recommend city council approval as well. And with that, my presentation is done. I can answer any questions, and then we also do have applicant representatives here if you would like to hear from them. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. So it's my understanding that Folsom-Cordoba has not made a final decision about a high school yet, they're still pursuing all kinds of options. So if, if the location of the high school were to change, they would have to come back, correct? The applicant would have to come back and get this?
So whoever has control of the properties in question would need to come back for some sort of specific plan land use amendment in order to accommodate some other type of land use, yes.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for my colleagues? Base Mayor Raythel?
And I'm just kind of basing this on Folsom-Cordoba. I've heard some talk of they may want to combine a middle school and high school site. And with that intention, would that be, or from what you understand, the lower site? Because it looks like, to me, really, the only parcels that are being prepped for sale here are parcels 2 and 3?
I do not know.
We've got a meeting set up with the school district and the property owners a week from Friday to learn more about that possibility, so, but I do, it's been described in the way you've, you've listed, so, to combine them, you know, in the southern portion of the site.
And that would be the lots 2 and 3 then?
That's what I understand. I have not seen any graphic of that, it's just been described.
I'm just wondering if you could list or use your pointer to show which lots are which, you know, because they're color-coded, but the numbers, I'm not quite clear on which pieces those apply to.
So these here, yeah, it's not super clear, I wish I had an overlay, so I apologize for that. Effectively, 6 is the open space area that you see up on the north side. 1 is everything from this line here down and around, it includes all this single-family residential, and then the school site and the park site. There are a couple of, like, the smaller open space lots here, 7 and 9. And 9 is effectively a tiny sliver here that's just more of a existing mapping issue related to the specific plan designation. Similar with 8 here, is this little bump out right here. And then you have 2 is this residential, and then 3 is the high school site, and then 4 and 5 are both open space, and I think they're, they may be both drainage features, but I know at least one of them is. Does that help?
Yeah, I think the most confusing piece was, was 1.
Was 1, yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for my colleagues before we open the public hearing? All right, seeing none, we will open the public hearing. Do we have any requests to speak?
You have no request to speak under this public hearing item.
Anybody in the public wish to speak on this item? Come on down. Please state your name for the record.
Hello, I'm Patty Soulsby. I just have some questions. I know a little bit about SEQA, it's in place to protect the public. So can it be explained how it's exempt? SEQA is exempt for all this area right here?
I will let our Community Development Director answer that, thank you.
The entire area had a comprehensive environmental impact report done, and this map is consistent with that plan, and so the SEQA was otherwise covered in a more comprehensive document done previously for the project.
What, what, what year was that? Was it recent or?
Yes, it's been, it was initially adopted in 2011 and then subsequent amendments to that, so we'd be happy to, you can reach out to me or Jessica through the Community Development website, I'll give you my contact information, and we'll be happy to follow up with you.
Any other members of the public wishing to address the council on this item? Seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I will entertain a motion for adoption of resolution number 11318. Anyone?
I'll move to adopt resolution number 11318.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Council members Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Roorbah.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, thank you, next item.
Okay, your first new business item this evening is item number 13. This is resolution number 11320, a resolution appointing Brian Whitmire as city manager and approving an employment agreement for said appointment.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the members of the City Council. Stephen Wong, your City Attorney. This item tonight is for the council to appoint a new city manager following the retirement of former city manager Elaine Anderson. I would like to introduce to the Folsom community the top candidate to be considered by the city council as our next city manager, Brian Whitmire. Mr. Whitmire has over 23 years of experience in municipal government and public administration. He comes to Folsom from the city of Oakdale, where he served as city manager for the past 12 years. Prior to Oakdale, Mr. Whitmire served as city manager at the city of Houston and assistant city manager at the city of Paterson. Mr. Whitmire holds a bachelor's degree in international studies from BYU and a master's degree in public administration from Cal State Standards Laws. He is a member of the International City Management Association and a representative of the Central Valley City Managers Division at the League of California Cities. In accordance with Government Code Section 5495-3C3, a summary of the city manager's salary and the benefits is reported as follows. The salary for the city manager will be $210,000 per year. The city manager will receive deferred compensation of 7.5%, a monthly auto allowance of $500, monthly expense allowance of $200, and a monthly tech allowance of $100. Consistent with other executive management employees of the city, the city manager is eligible for both, for health benefits, which, which include vision, dental, and comprehensive medical insurance. Other benefits include life and disability insurance, as well as workers' compensation coverage. Paid time off includes holidays, administrative leave, annual leave, sick leave, and leave accruals on the same basis as other executive management employees. Further benefits include purse, member retiree benefits, and deferred compensation plans. Mr. Whitmire is married with, with four children. They intend to make Folsom their new home. With that, I am subject to your questions. Welcome, Mr. Whitmire and family.
Thank you very much, Steve. Any questions for my colleagues? I don't think so, but I will say on behalf of the council that we are thrilled to welcome Brian and his family to Folsom. We received 55 applications for the position of city manager, so he beat out 54 other applicants to be the unanimous choice of the council, and I would say we were very impressed with his command of municipal finance and for his collaborative leadership style. So we look forward to welcoming them, it's going to be a good fit for Folsom. With that, I will, any public comment on this item?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Now, I'll also comment, you asked for questions, so. But I am super excited about having Brian come and join us. It's two months, I think March 10th, did you say that, was his first day? And, and, and I think, I think the city is excited, I'm, they're asking some questions, but I'm sure he's watching tonight, so I just want to say welcome, and we look forward to helping the process. He is going to move here, I think, I'm not sure if Steve mentioned that. And so we want to have our arms wide open to him, and I, hopefully, he's going to work as hard as he can in Folsom, he has a big task. But I think we were all impressed with his humor and his ability to disarm us and, and make us feel like he was a part of our team already, and I think that we need that, and I think collectively, we're all very excited, and so just to add on to what you said.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, then we'll entertain a motion, make this official.
I'll move that we proceed with the appointment of Brian Whitmire to the city manager and approve an employment agreement for said appointment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Council members Kozlowski.
Yes.
Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Roorbah.
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes, thank you very much. Next item, please.
Okay, your next item is new business item number 14. This will be resolution number 11319, a resolution receiving report from the Community Development Department on the approval of a parcel map waiver for the Cindero Residential Condo Project.
Welcome back, Jessica.
Thank you, glad to be back. This will be quick, all right, so I'm Jessica Brant with Community Development, and I am giving just a really brief presentation on this item. So the Planning Commission at their November 20th meeting approved a request for a tentative parcel map waiver for residential condominiums, a design review and inclusionary housing plan for the Cindero Mangini Ranch Lot 14 project. The project will include development of 136 units of rental condominium on a 9 and 1/2 acre site at 14545 South Point Drive in the Folsom Plan area. The project's utilizing site improvements that are already in place for the now defunct Mangini Ranch Lot 14 bungalow project with some modifications to accommodate the new project design. The reason I'm here tonight is that Folsom Municipal Code Section 1624080E requires that if the Planning Commission approves or conditionally approves a parcel map waiver, the Community Development Departments must make a written report to the city council. Further, the city council may vote to review the parcel map waiver and conditions. So in its action, the Planning Commission did make all necessary findings for approving the parcel map waiver. The Planning Commission further found that the site is physically suitable for the type and density of development proposed and that the project is not likely to cause substantial environmental damage or serious public health or safety problems. Staff supports the parcel map waiver granted by the Planning Commission and recommends that the city council approve the resolution, accepting the report and confirming the waiver. Thank you.
Thank you, any questions for Jessica?
Okay.
Okay, seeing that, any requests to speak on this item?
You have no request to speak on this item.
Okay. I will say, I think it is very nice that we're going to have some for-sale condos. I consider this some of that missing metal housing that we all talk about, so I think this is very exciting for the city. So with that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to adopt resolution number 11319.
That's all I got to say, perfect.
Yes. I won't say the rest of it, but I'm very pleased to see this happening. I've been talking about it for six or eight or more years, you know, after serving on the Planning Commission, you know, there was a dearth of housing that people in the missing metal, younger people and older people who want to downsize, I can purchase in this town. So I'm really looking forward to seeing this project come forward. Thank you.
I'll second.
Perfect, we got a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Council members Kozlowski.
Thank you for using the word dearth, and yes.
Leary.
Yes.
Raythel.
Yes.
Yes.
Rorba?
Yes.
And Aquino.
Yes. Next item, please.
Okay, our next item this evening is item number 15. This is the at-large appointments to the Arts and Cultural Commission, Historic District Commission, L&amp;L District Advisory Committee, Library Commission, Parks and Rec Commission, Planning Commission, Traffic Safety Committee, and Utility Commission. And before we get started, we do have one request to speak on this item.
Okay. And before you call that person up, I just want to say, I see a lot of applicants in the audience today. Thank you for being here. This is always a very difficult exercise for council members because we get many more applicants than we have space available. So we do our best to try to, you know, put, put the right people on the commissions, but thank you to everyone for applying. We greatly appreciate your interest and wish we had a spot for everybody. So why don't you go ahead and call up that person?
Okay, your one speaker on this item is Mark Menz. Come on down, Mark.
Just wanted to put the face behind the emails and the application guys have. I'm Mark Menz. Mr. Kozlowski, I, we've met before. Mr. Haverdy, this is new. Welcome. Mr. Raythel. Sarah, I still have some tea that I was supposed to give you. And Anna, we've met before, but it was quite a while ago, Ann Barbara. I am currently, well, I was the chairman of the Utility Commission. Been on it for two years, but you have my CV and my application. So I don't want to take a lot of time. Just wanted you to be able to put a face behind the application.
Thank you very much. All right, no other requests to speak?
You have no other request to speak on this item.
I would like to ask my colleagues what your preference is. Typically, we do what we call the charter commissions first. We would start with planning and then go to parks. But if you'd rather take it alphabetically or some other way?
I think that's great, planning.
Planning and parks? Over here? Okay with that?
I prefer just straight lottery on everything. Any order is fine with me.
All right, we'll stick with tradition here. So we're going to start with the planning. You have your ballot in front of you.
Hold on.
So Krista, we're just voting for two at-large and passing it down to you?
Yeah, that's right. So each council member has a ballot that looks basically identical to what you're seeing on the overhead projector there. So they'll mark their ballots, pass them down. I'll read them out. They're not intended to be secret. They're just intended to be filled out individually. You can see at the top that council members Leary and Raythel have already made their direct appointments to the Planning Commission, Bill Barcelona and Diana Lani. And so now we'll just be looking at votes for at-large. So whenever you're ready, send them down.
And you can see how many applicants we have there for two spots. So this is always a tough choice.
So I have a question. If there isn't a majority, so if it's not three for one, if it's like two, one, 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 what hap, is the two win or what happens then?
You need three, three votes to appoint a commissioner, so you will vote again.
We'll re-vote on the five that were, or the four, whatever.
We ask each council member to reconsider their vote.
Okay, thank you.
Modified re-choice voting?
And lobby if you'd like.
Yes. Okay, so you ready? Okay, so council member Leary, I'm sorry, hang on. Has voted for Justin Hurst and Tanya Morales. Council member Rorba votes for Jim Ortega and Rachel Williams. Is that you?
Yes, hi.
Sorry. Council member Aquino votes for Justin Hurst and Jim Ortega. Council member Kozlowski votes for Tanya Morales and Anthony Nicolai. And Vice Mayor Raythel votes for Justin Hurst and Tanya Morales.
So it looks to me like Justin Hurst and Tanya Morales have three required votes and they would be appointed to the Planning Commission.
Okay. Congratulations to Justin and Tanya and thank you to everyone who applied. That will take us to Parks and Recreation.
Jen, we have the second sheet for that. Thank you.
Okay. Council member Leary votes for Halah El-Khatib and Elena Wagner.
Council member Rorba votes for Jim Ortega and Elena Wagner. Vice Mayor Raythel votes for Erin Silva and Elena Wagner. Council member Kozlowski votes for Joanne Brosh and Kevin Goddard. And Mayor Aquino votes for Jeff Kernan and Elena Wagner.
Okay, so we have Elena Wagner?
Yep.
Who's in the audience. Congratulations. And then we need to come up with the second person, correct?
That's right.
Okay.
I, I will advocate for, I voted for Ortega on planning and then now on arts, Parks and, what, where did we go on? Parks and Recreation. I think Ortega has done really well on the Planning Department, Planning Commission. He got a recommendation from the chair. I think he's dedicated. He shows up. He reads his packet. He loves the city. I would hate to see him not serve on a committee. So that's why I would advocate for him.
Are we changing our votes orally or are we waiting for passing around?
It, it's up to you. If you want to, if you want to change orally and we get to three verbally, then we can do that.
I'd be happy to switch my vote to Jim Ortega.
As would I.
Same.
Okay. So with that, Jim Ortega and Elena Wagner are, are appointed to the Parks and Rec Commission.
Okay, congratulations. Again, thank you to everybody who applied. From there, why don't we go alphabetically? So we'll go back to the Arts and Culture Commission. Again, marking two.
And while the council members are filling out their ballots, I'll just point out that council member Leary has named Alexis Goddard as her direct appointment to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Okay.
Okay. All right, so we're almost there. Thank you. Okay, council member Leary has votes for Julian Sarafian and Lucinda Winward. Council member Kozlowski votes for Mark Alaman and Lucinda Winward. Vice Mayor Raythel votes for Mark Alaman and Robert Sumner.
Council member Rorba votes for Robert Sumner and Lucinda Winward. And Mayor Aquino votes for Mark Alaman and Lucinda Winward. So Mark Alaman and Lucinda Winward are appointed to the Arts and Culture Commission.
Congratulations and thank you to everyone who applied. That takes us to the Historic District Commission. And I just want to confirm with the clerk, tonight we're doing the HDC, the architect slot and the business rep outside the Sutter Street subarea. We are not doing the Planning Commission rep because they generally nominate their own as a recommendation to the council, but it's pretty much a formality. We tend to take their recommendations.
Just take a verbal vote?
That, that is correct. So the, the, yeah, the Planning Commission nominations will come back to you at your January 28th meeting because the Planning Commission meets tomorrow night and at that meeting, they will nominate their own members to serve on HDC.
Perfect.
It appears like we only have the two candidates that qualify for those two spots.
Correct.
You do, but the Planning Commission might nominate others than those that applied.
No, she's not talking about.
For the two that we are voting on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
There's only one candidate for each spot.
That's right.
Qualified.
That's right. Sorry, I thought you were talking about the Planning Commission.
Thank you.
Okay, got all five. Okay, so council member Leary votes for Jennifer Cabrera and John Felts. Council member Rorba votes for Jennifer Cabrera and John Felts. Probably do this quicker. We have unanimous from everybody for Jennifer Cabrera and John Felts.
Hey, congratulations and thank you to everyone who applied. That takes us to Landscape and Lighting, which we have a similar situation here. I think we only have one applicant for each of the L&amp;L districts here.
That's right. Can we just move?
Yes.
That we accept all applicants?
Could.
I move that we accept all applicants as they are.
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Is that okay, Mr. Wong? All right. I will say, I am going, I talked to the city clerk about this and I'm going to ask Mr. Haverdy, once this whole process is over tonight and we know which residents did not get onto the commission of their choice or a commission, I think it would be worthwhile to ask Parks and Rec to run all the addresses of those who didn't get on a commission to see if their Landscape and Lighting District has a vacancy. Because I believe we have seven, eight, nine districts that have no representative. And it's a, it's an important job and a great way to get involved. It's not a huge time commitment, so. That takes us to the Library Commission.
Did I understand earlier that Diana Lani was directly appointed by?
To the Planning Commission, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay, we're on library? I got confused.
Yes.
You're waiting for me, probably.
And while the remaining council are filling out their ballots, I'll mention that council member Leary named her direct appointee of Bonnie London to the Library Commission. So congratulations, Bonnie.
Yeah, well, now I have to. Yeah, I gave it for three. I apologize. Don't confuse me.
Okay, so council member Rorba for library votes for Robert Deutsch and Sarah Norberg. Council member Leary votes for Catherine Alaman and VJ Jana Legata. Council, council member Kozlowski votes for Catherine Alaman and Benjamin Osipoff. Vice Mayor Raythel votes for Catherine Alaman and VJ Jana Legata. Mayor Aquino votes for Catherine Alaman and VJ Jana Legata. So it looks like Catherine and VJ are appointed.
Congratulations to Catherine and VJ and thank you to all who applied. That takes us to the Traffic Safety Committee. You're voting for one bicycle slash pedestrian safety slot and two at-large citizen representatives.
Thank you. One bike and ped and two citizen, correct?
Correct.
I have a quick question. On this, if people only put down bike, ped, I mean, it says, you know, traffic safety, bike, ped, and citizens rep, some people have. And other people just put traffic safety dash bike, ped. So a bike, ped person can't be considered for the general position. Is that right?
We generally wouldn't if they didn't self-select that, no.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you for your patience, everybody. After this, we only have one to go.
This page is inconsequential, but I forgot to pass it on. That's page two.
Thank you. Okay.
If you all wonder what's taking so long, we had a lot of that. And it was tough to differentiate because we've got a lot of very talented people in this town. And we're all trying to be careful to pick who you think might be able to do the best job. But as Mayor Aquino said, I hope that more people will get involved on some of the committees that aren't actually being selected for this evening.
Okay, so council member Leary votes for Joanne Brosh and Kevin Goddard. I'm sorry, you're missing one.
Barbara, you get to vote for three.
Yeah, Barbara, you get to.
Two, one for bike and ped and one for?
A two.
For citizen. Oh, you just put it there. She just put. Okay, yeah.
Okay. And also Anthony Nicolai. Surely. So council member Leary votes for Joanne Brosh, Kevin Goddard, and Anthony Nicolai. Council member Rorba votes for Joanne Brosh, Rick Kogle, and Kevin Goddard. Council member Kozlowski votes for Joanne Brosh, Raymond Garcia, and Kevin Goddard. Vice Mayor Raythel votes for Joanne Brosh, Rick Kogle, and Kevin Goddard. And Mayor Aquino votes for Joanne Brosh, Rick Kogle, and Kevin Goddard. So it looks like we have Brosh, Kogle, and Goddard appointed to Traffic Safety Committee.
Okay, congratulations to Joanne, Rick, and Kevin, and thank you to all who applied. Madam Clerk, I just noticed something.
Oh, gosh.
There was an, an application that got caught in our filter originally. You sent it to us afterwards. It was for Amy McBride.
That's right.
She shows up on this master spreadsheet, but I don't believe she's shown up on any of these ballots. And the reason I just know that is because I'm planning to vote for her for Utility Commission and she is not on the ballot. So just an FYI to my colleagues, if you would like to write in Amy McBride for the Utility Commission, you can do so.
Can you hold on a second so I can look at her? I don't remember her.
Yeah, thank you for that, and I am sorry. She got caught in every spam filter we had, so she did apply before the deadline that was confirmed. It just got redirected to the spam filter, and we didn't know about it.
Okay.
So, but she, the email was sent to the council in, I think, around December 15th or 16th. We forwarded that to you.
Would it be possible also to just identify who has already been appointed to something else before we do this one? I think there's just one, maybe two.
So, VJ Jana Legata has been appointed?
Kevin Goddard above him.
Mm-hmm.
Mark Mens.
No, not yet.
No, not yet.
Oh, that's right, he's on this one. Yeah, sorry. He spoke earlier. That's why I'm confused. Okay. And I think that's just the two, right?
That's it, yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you. While everybody is pondering their vote for this one, let me make my usual pitch for the Utility Commission just generally. One of the most important parts of our, or one of the larger parts of our city budget is all of the revenue that's gathered by our enterprise funds for collecting waste and handling sewers and selling water and everything else, right? So, understanding the city budget means understanding all of those enterprise fund budgets. So, whether or not the 16 or 17 people that wanted to be on this commission end up on the commission, I would implore all of you to pay closer attention to what the goings-on are at the Utility Commission. They very rarely have an audience and deserve one. So, please make some time to visit those meetings. It was the most interesting bit of service I had before I was on the City Council, and super important, and Mr. Mens, thank you for drawing a highlight on it earlier today.
I don't know why that was the hardest thing tonight, this whole thing.
It's so important, that's why.
Well, I mean, the logistics of it.
Okay, so Councilmember Leary votes for Mark Mens and Jag Nagendra. Councilmember Kozlowski votes for Mark Mens and Julian Sarafian. Vice Mayor Raythel votes for Mark Mens and Erin Silva. Councilmember Rohrbach votes for Mark Mens and Jag Nagendra. And Mayor Aquino votes for Mark Mens and Amy McBride. So, Mark Mens is appointed, but we do not have a quorum for the second seat.
Okay, would you like more ballots, a new ballot, or would you like to do this verbally?
Can you, I could not find Amy's.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Application?
Oh, well, she's here in the audience. Would you like her to introduce herself?
Or you can advocate for her, why you, why are you picking her?
Well, I know she's a former teacher. I don't know exactly what she does right now, but she does live in Folsom Ranch, and I do think it's important that that part of the city where all the growth is happening be represented on these commissions. So, that is my main reason. Plus, I just know her from, she's an active participant particularly in that part of the city.
I would be happy to make my direct appointment be Erin Silva and switch my vote to Amy McBride.
And I'll pass my seraph, saraph, Julian's vote over to McBride.
All right.
Sarafian.
We've got three for Amy.
Yeah, so we do. So, Amy McBride is appointed to Utility Commission. Sorry, Amy, for the drama. And so, Erin Silva will be identified as Vice Mayor Raythel's direct appointee to Utility.
And I'm sorry I didn't notice it earlier. I had my mind on utility, and alphabetically, that's the last one, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry about that.
Okay.
That was tough. Okay, that wraps that up.
Okay, thank you.
I can also go ahead and make Robert Sumner my Arts and Culture direct appointment, and Solomon Keese as my direct appointment to Library.
Very nice.
Thanks for letting me play the games and who I could get in there at large before I made my direct appointments.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you to all the applicants, and thank you to everybody for your patience while we sorted through all of that.
I do want to make a comment. I mean, you did already, Mayor, but there were so many applicants, and I'm so thrilled that so many are willing to participate. Way too qualified of a community for us to just pick one. So, reapply, apply again. Sometimes our appointees will have to get off for different reasons. So, what I would suggest you do in the next two years is introduce yourself to the current council. Ask, I think each of us are willing to have coffee with just about anybody. So, make sure that we know your face and why you love the city, and then hopefully in two years, you will be able to get appointed. Or if there's a vacancy in one of our appointees, then we have your name fresh in our minds. So, basically, campaign for yourself because we understand what that's about. And, you know, thank you for all the applicants. It takes a lot.
And I just wanted to add something. And I already said earlier that there were a lot of applicants. It was difficult to pick people. And I was working hard to make sure we had someone that fit into each one of those positions and had the experience. And I really want to encourage everybody to not just sign up to maybe be on the lighting and landscaping things, although we have lots of openings there, but to get engaged in the community with a lot of our volunteer organizations that are really struggling to do the work that they need to done to do. And that would be like Friends of Folsom Parkway, Folsom Athletic Association, the Historical Society, the Lions, the Rotaries. They're all great organizations, and they really are what keep a lot of our residents engaged and help them to learn more about how the city works. And it kind of gives you a leg up also to being appointed to a commission down the line. So, thank you all for applying and hope to see you all out and about working on lots of projects in the future.
All right, thank you. Okay, next item, please.
Okay, your next item this evening is item number 16. This is consideration of a draft City Council travel policy and direction to staff.
All right, thank you. So, I had asked last year for this to come back for a discussion. It just, I know we increased the travel budget last year from, I think, 16,000 to 33,000 total, not per council member. And so, just thought it was appropriate that we have some sort of established policy to make sure that the city's interests are represented, but that we are also being very good stewards of the taxpayer's dollar. So, thank you to the city clerk who took the lead in drafting some language. Just wanted to open it up to my colleagues. First of all, if you have any questions or feedback. This is just a draft. We're intending that we can give instruction to staff that we like this exactly as it is, bring it back for formal adoption, or we want to make some changes to it. We don't really have a presentation. We can put it up on the screen if you would like. But other than that, any initial questions, feedback?
So, and maybe it was in here, but I'm just trying to understand the intent. I get the restrictions of not spending taxpayer dollars right as you're going out of office and giving a report out, coming back from any travel. I'm comfortable with everything that's in here. But is there any intention to, to say, or who gets to decide on the travel budget? Is it up to each council member to say, hey, this is my, I have X number of travel dollars, and to me, this travel aligns with the city's strategic objectives or making those connections? And so, I'm going to spend my X number of travel budget in this way? Or are we expecting to come back to council to approve different travel? I'm just trying to, trying to make that clear on, is it a council decision on where we send people? Or is it individual council members that we're going to leave up to them to make that decision?
Well, I think that's what we can talk about tonight. I think that's open for discussion. I guess for me, I envision some kind of hybrid where, I mean, if you just take the travel budget and divide it, it comes out to $6,600 per year. Again, with the new council members, half of that because you're coming in halfway through the fiscal year. But I think we might also want to talk about, you know, are there certain trips or conferences or something that we think the city should be represented at? And should there be some sort of rotation or something so that, you know, there are people have the opportunity to go if they want at some point? Or just as you say, where we just divide it and say, use it or don't use it, whatever you want? This is, this is why we're having this discussion.
I think one of the things that isn't clear right now is how much Councilmember Raythel or I might have available to us, like, because we don't know how it was divided up.
$3,300 to each of you.
Okay, so that money's still available.
Yes.
Excuse me. And, you know, I like the idea of kind of identifying conferences where it's best for us to be at to represent the city, and then others that are probably critical to aid us in decision-making. You know, some of those are put on by the League of California Cities or other organizations. They keep us up to date on state law and legislative changes that we may want to support in the long run. And I think we can all put our heads together and make a list. So, is that something that we want to develop in the future? Or is that some, seems like it would take a great deal of discussion this evening, and maybe it's something that we could do and then bring back for further discussion to kind of let the public know, hey, here's how we're using your money to make us do a better job for the city?
Yeah, I think also if you look at six item, or number six, demonstrable benefits requirement, it says all travel expenditures should have benefit to the city of Folsom, whether through the acquisition of new knowledge, the establishment of valuable connections, or the advancement of city projects. Every trip should have clear objectives that align with the city's priorities. So, I think we could identify different, again, conferences, events, trips, whatever. Or we could just say they have to satisfy one of these categories.
I think your suggestion is good, Councilmember Leary, about talking through as far as the five of us and what do we want to go to. This is one of the reasons I would have been asking for a council retreat, basically, or some sort of different word for that every year, to set our priorities and our goals going forward. And I think this was, this is a great example of, you know, I've been trying to go to National League of Cities, which I went to in my previous city, and it was extremely valuable. And then now this year, I'm going to cap to cap. And obviously, I fought hard for this in the budget last year, knowing that we're missing out on opportunities to be educated on what we can do as a city, what other cities are doing creatively at the national level and at the state level. So, I'm not interested in spending a lot of time on this. I don't think this moves the needle of what's most important in Folsom and what we're faced with. But I would be definitely interested in, maybe at our workshop next week, in talking through what do we each want to go to and what's our passion? And then kind of formulating what our priorities are from there for the year. And I think that would be very valuable for the two new council members especially. And then, and then as the budget goes forward, we can create the budget from there. I think we're close with the $33,000 budget. I think $6,600 is a good idea and good outline as far as, you know, kind of what we have to move forward with as we plan what we want to do. But I think if a council member wants to go to two things that, and it's going to exceed that, then work with the city manager on, is there a budget to support that? Because another council member is only using a portion of them. And I think that all should be encouraged. I think travel, and it's not travel like we're going to the Bahamas for the public. It is travel for experience. It's all the things that you mentioned in your draft outlet, or Krista did. Thank you for putting this together. So, I think let's add that to the workshop next week or a future workshop as far as our priorities for the upcoming year, and make that part of the policy that we decide every year, what are we looking for, what do we want to do? All of us individually have different strengths, and we also have different passions. So, I'm always looking to not put a cap on our learning and our education that we can do for every council member. But also, I do appreciate that we're looking for outcomes. But I also think we're putting a lot of accountability here, which is okay. But I think that we're held accountable for our voters. So, I appreciate Councilmember Raythel's question too, what is the intent of this? And to me, it seems like the intent is to put our city voters at ease that we're spending your money wisely. But I also think that's at the responsibility of each council member too. So, I'm not sure I added anything to this conversation, except I appreciate that you want to kind of work through what we, what's available, what we want to go to and why, and then move forward from there. So, I'm not sure if it's adding anything to this policy. Otherwise, it reads fine to me.
If I may, the principles that are described here, I think, are completely appropriate. I am leery, madam, of us getting into a situation where we're trying to second-guess each other about what we think our priorities are in terms of education or conferences or things that we want to go to. So, I just hope that we'll grant each other the, you know, latitude to make choices that you think are in the best interest and meet these standards without us getting into a process of, you know, excessive discussion, maybe cross-referencing so that we don't, all five of us show up at the National League of Cities, and that may not be as productive as splitting our efforts up.
That's not unbeneficial, though.
I realize that. I'm just saying that given the, given the short, the small amount of money that we have, that may not be the best use of it is for all of us to go to one thing. There may be instances where that is the case, but I, I just, I'm just saying, I don't want this to get to the point where we're turning in a form, getting an approval from the other four, having big wide discussions about it and second-guessing each other. Our constituents will let us know if we're not doing the right thing, and leave it to them. My two cents. But the principles described here, I think, are absolutely on the mark.
Yeah, I think my question was more to, you know, I'd be willing to give up some of my allocation some years to make sure we have somebody that goes to X conference, right? Or I would hope other council members would do the same. So, I'm definitely more supportive of during that budget process, us looking at it as a, as a whole entity and say, what are our priorities? To make sure we have representation there, because I do think some of these things move the needle. We absolutely need to make connections to apply for some of the large grant funding we need for certain things. We need to understand how those processes work, and we need to advocate for our city when it comes to, we can't say how many times I heard, you know, unfunded state laws, unfunded state mandates with the, you know, previous councils and all councils. I do think we need to make sure that we're out there advocating for our interests because these things absolutely do move the needle, and it is a wise use of taxpayer dollars to make sure the needle's not moved against us sometimes. So, I think it's a, it's a good discussion and having it in the budget under these priorities is great.
I would also like to see, you know, in theory, that if we use 30,000 of the 33, that that 3,000 carries over as a slush fund. So, let's just say the next year, two people want to go to National League of Cities, and one, you know, like, we have an ability to kind of have some leeway if there's, we'll just have some, like, a little bit of a border. So, sometimes maybe the council, because it's an election year and our two people are leaving, like last year, we had $10,000 left over, and that could be applied to the next year because the new council members want to do this, that, and whatever. So, kind of carry that. I don't know if that's a policy thing in here, but to carry that over, I think, would be wise.
And so, the only thing I would say in response to that is I'm not sure it works that way for any other department. And I do think that as the council, you know, we're at the top of the pyramid, and we have to lead by example. And so, we're, you know, we're asked to work within a budget. And rather than saying, we want to go on all these trips and let's figure out how to fund it, I personally think it needs to work the opposite way. Here's the budget, figure out what you can go to within that. Sometimes you can get other agencies. Maybe you sit on a board and you can get them to help pay for something. But I wouldn't, if other departments don't get to carry things over, then I don't think we should get to carry things over. And I don't know exactly, there's a blanket policy for that, but Stacy in general?
No, we don't carry over operating expenses unless you're in a contract or something like that. It would have to be just during the next year's budget process if you needed to add more to the lineup.
Okay.
I agree with what you're saying. And, you know, if there's money that I don't spend, I would prefer go back in the budget and be, I mean, we've got a significant number of needs to cover financially. I don't have any objection to using my own money if I want to go to something that exceeds. I don't have any objection to using my own money if I want to go to something that exceeds, you know, the allocation of money. I'm a frugal person, but I'd also like to support my own interests and not rely entirely on the city to help me develop my knowledge base.
So it sounds like everybody is okay with at least this language coming back. The only thing that I kind of wonder that's not in here, and I wonder if it should be, is we don't have anything about, you know, what exactly could be covered with the travel budget. Is it just transportation and lodging? Is it, is it a per diem amount for meals? You know, it seems like it probably should be consistent with whatever we do for other city employees.
There already is a per diem for travel at this moment. So I think if a council member is using their own time and effort, we get paid six hundred dollars a month to work as hard as we do for the city. If we're going with good intent to go to National League of Cities or cap to cap or ICSC or other study missions, we're taking our personal time and our business time away. So I think definitely it should include a per diem, which is already common practice. I'm not looking to get paid on going to educate myself, but I'm definitely, I mean, we're already using our free time and effort and advocating, and I don't think anyone's going to be opposed to what is already common practice.
Okay, but would you be okay with just making the language consistent with whatever is, applies to other city employees? Because I think they do allow for a per diem.
Yes, what is already.
Okay, so maybe we could just add a line item here.
Yeah, I can add some language along with that.
Okay, okay. So Mr. Interim City Attorney, or City Manager, maybe you'll be the interim city attorney next. One of these days. Not anytime soon, but my point is, he's, he's, he can do all kinds of things. He's not just a former fire chief. Maybe we could bring this back for adoption, just with some language about the per diem. And then I guess just the council can work together to identify what trips we want to go on? Okay. Okay, but I will just, I can pass this out afterwards, but yes, so the travel budget worked out to sixty-six hundred dollars per council member. Councilmember Leary, Vice Mayor Raythel would just have half that for this, rest of this fiscal year, so thirty-three hundred. Councilmember Kozlowski has already used his allocation, I think that was probably the trip to Korea or something. And then Councilmember Rorba and I have used a very small portion, under a hundred and seventy dollars, so. Anyway, okay. You have enough information there?
I do, thank you.
Okay. All right, next item, please.
Okay, your last discussion item this evening is item number seventeen. This is the appointment of city council representatives to regional boards and commissions.
All right, I will take this one also. So as you're probably aware, the city charter says that the mayor will represent the council on regional boards and commissions, but the mayor does have the option to appoint a representative with the concurrence of the council. So these are the appointments that I'm recommending, but obviously, this requires the majority of the council to approve.
Do you have an exhibit for the audience?
Oh, do we have an exhibit?
We can pull one up, yeah. We've got it ready, so Jen will pull it up for you.
Okay, thank you. So I kind of did this with, with two things in mind. Number one, per our governance manual, we try to keep these assignments consistent from year to year because, you know, we like to build seniority on these regional boards. But the other thing is, there are five regional boards that pay a meeting stipend. And although none of us got into this for the money, it does seem like it is fair and makes sense that there are five members of the council, and each one of us should be primary on one of the boards that pays the stipend and an alternate on one of the boards that pays the stipend. So that means I would give up SAC SUE, I'm going to keep the Air District because I'm the chair this year and next year. Councilmember Kozlowski would have to give up one, I think he will reluctantly give up RT, and then somebody would take over for the Sacramento Cable Commission. So here, here, you can see what I've recommended. You can also see, in addition to the meeting stipend, many of these boards and commissions require that you fill out Form 700, which you already have to do for the council. There is kind of a cover sheet you can put on when you file, just, you know, for the other boards. I do believe GSEC, the Greater Sacramento Economic Council, that that should be the mayor primary with the vice mayor as alternate. And then the Retirement Board of Authority for the city, that is the board that governs our retirement health trust fund. When, when Councilmember Kozlowski and I came on the council, that was the mayor and the vice mayor who represented. I'm suggesting that we go back to that, but again, none of this is set in stone. One change that I think we do want to make, Vice Mayor Raythel has indicated an interest in representing the city on the Sacramento Transportation Authority, and I'm perfectly happy to give that up. So you and I could just swap primary and alternate there.
Works for me.
Any other comments, questions? Everybody happy with their assignments, relatively happy with their assignments? And hopefully, you know, we're all fairly happy, and this is something that we can keep consistent for the next several years and not, not be changing every year. But I think this does give everybody an opportunity to serve on a regional board and build those regional relationships.
Sounds great.
Yeah, I have some other interests, so I would be interested maybe in a year or two in swapping those out.
Okay, do you want to bring it up right now?
Please bring it up right now.
Please bring it up right now. Well, I, you know, and I don't want to be, you know, have this be antagonistic or anything, but I, you know, I do, I have done some work in the past with SAC RT, and I wouldn't mind being the primary, but I don't know how Councilmember Rorba feels about that.
No, I appreciate you asking that. No, I do want to be on RT or SAG Cog, so I'm pretty sure that Mike's not going to give up SAG Cog, so, no, I appreciate that. That's good to know, but I'm.
But we did put you as alternate.
Yeah, no, no, I understand that. Maybe, you know, when you know ahead of time, I'd be happy to.
Oh, absolutely. I think that we should have a representative at every meeting, and so I know that, that we should never have a vacancy from Folsom, so that's why alternates are important. I know that you tapped me in this year at one of your, I don't even remember. Thank you. And I, you know, so definitely for sure.
Yeah, well, thank you. And we can talk about it in the future, see how things go for all of us making all the meetings.
Anybody else have any other?
I am delighted with this distribution of responsibility. And Barbara, please don't ever miss a meeting of the Cable Commission.
Really excited about that commission.
That's what I'm saying. I knew you would be, so please don't miss any of those meetings.
Thanks.
Okay, well, then, do we need a motion on this?
If it's the council's general consent by nodding of heads, we can go with it.
So it'll be this spreadsheet, but swap me and Vice Mayor Raythel for the STA.
Yes, so I'll make these changes and give us, give us a day or two. We'll update the webpage with all of these assignments, and we're going to reach out to all these regional agencies on your behalf, share your contact information, and confirm the start of term. So by next week, you should be all set.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you all. All right.
All right, that takes us to city manager comments.
Mr. Interim City Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I'm taking a little different tact on this this evening, and so a lot of it is recognizing our good workers, the members of this city workforce. The first one I'd like to recognize is the Water Department. We had a pretty significant water leak in the Business Park off of, off of Folsom Boulevard, and they became detectives in finding this leak. And, and I just want to send my appreciation to the Water Department for their great work. They were out there on a Saturday and a Sunday looking for this and finally found it. It was a big deal. Along with, closer?
There we go.
Okay. Along with that, I'd like to recognize that we have the Folsom Water Vision Project. The meeting is Tuesday, January 21st at 6:30 PM. And the Environmental Water Resources Department and their consultants will be presenting a recommendation on a preferred portfolio. They have details on the website, city website for water for that. Also, the Folsom Light Rail Service resumed and resume, is resuming. They have a fifteen-minute frequency has begun. SAC RT is working through a few issues. I know that it's been troubling Mark a little bit in Public Works. We have a few backups with traffic, so I just ask our public to be patient with that. Public Works is supporting SAC RT and working through those issues. I'd like to recognize our Folsom Police Department and Christine and her staff in our Communications Unit for their e-scooter, e-bike, and e-motorcycle public education effort, which is underway, and we're doing that in partnership with Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. This is a problem in our community, and we're reaching out to the school district, to parents and the teens themselves to obey the law. We have meetings this week, we started last week with the larger businesses and faith-based groups in, in our community this week. Last week, we met with Palladio and Councilmember Leary, join me with that visit. This week, we have visits with Kiko Man Foods, Gekikhan, and Mercy Folsom Hospital, and I know that council members are joining me, or I'm joining you on these visits, so I appreciate your support with that. It's really to listen to them and thank them for being here in our city of Folsom. I'd like to recognize some years of service, people, members of our, our city. So we have a few to recognize, several from PD. These are, they have achieved twenty years of service recently this year, in twenty-twenty-four, rather. So we have Warner Herden Jr., Gina Merdnot, did I get that right, Chief?
Marianne.
Pretty close, okay. Roman Kim, Andrew Bates, Lou Wright, and the police chief himself tells me that he just recently, last week, celebrated thirty years of service. Thank you, Chief Hillman. And that's not all. From Environmental Water Resources, we have Chris Robinson, and we have also Glenn Caldwell from Public Works, Greg Backen, and Sandra Munoz, and Tim Jones. And then from the Fire Department, Bill Woody Woodward, who has celebrated twenty years. So we have some longstanding members that have, have given their life's service to this city and the people who live here, and I'm greatly appreciative of that. We have our State of the City for 2025 coming up next week, next Thursday, January 23rd. It's at Lakeside. There's a ticketed luncheon that begins at 11:30. Tickets available on the Chamber website, but the mayor's speech will begin at about 12:15, and that is free. It's a, it's an open meeting, free to the public. Doors will open at 12:15 and allow anyone that would like to come to listen to our mayor talk about the great things this city is doing and has done, please come. The city is seeking CAPS and CERT volunteers, so CAPS, Folsom's citizens assisting public safety and CERT. Over in the Fire Department, Folsom Community Emergency Response Team. So if you have any interest in serving the city in that regard, please look at our website and sign up, join those two great outfits. I'd like to give a big shout out to the Folsom Police Department Foundation, who's donating three thousand dollars to our library to fund a new fireplace for the children's reading area. And then my last announcement is for the kids in the audience or parents who have children. If you'd like to read a book with me next Wednesday at the library at 10:30, we'll be reading Shaggy Dogs and Waggy Dogs. So I look forward to seeing you then. Thank you, Mayor.
Outstanding.
Thank you. Councilmember Kozlowski?
No report tonight, thank you.
Okay. Vice Mayor Raythel?
Yeah, I recently had the privilege of attending the State of Public Safety put on by the Sacramento County District Attorney, T.N. Ho. During that State of Public Safety, the Folsom Police Department was recognized, and Lieutenant Kinepa gave an update on the great work that Folsom PD is doing, really as a model for the region in prosecuting fentanyl dealers and getting fentanyl off the street. They have changed the trajectory of fentanyl deaths in Sacramento County, and just wanted to give a big shout out, just like they gave at the State of Public Safety to Folsom Police Department for their work in that and their leadership in that area. Another quote that stuck with me during that was one from Supervisor Pat Hume. We talked, or they talked a lot about law enforcement and social services, dealing with the homeless crisis going on throughout our region. And Supervisor Hume said the words that, what you tolerate, you can expect. And that really kind of stuck with me, and I thought about it over the next couple of days. And I know our hot team and our police department have been working hard on cleaning up camps since the grants passed decision, and just want to commend them on those efforts. I think we've seen it in the community. We do have a couple of camps still that are on fish and wildlife property, and I just want to recognize those folks. We are aware of them. Thank you for everybody that has reached out to me or other council members of the city on those, doing our best to work through that and encourage fish and wildlife to take care of that, that property. And that will be, be very helpful, because it seems like those are kind of the last ones that are significant size, that are within the bounds of the city, at least that I know of. I'll also thank Heart. The winter shelter is now open. They are processing folks or taking folks in at the upper rodeo grounds at 5:00 PM. And the faith-based communities are really the ones behind that Heart Winter Shelter. I just want to say that's, it's no easy task, and we appreciate, I appreciate their efforts. Folsom Athletic Association is having an inaugural crab feed fundraiser on January 25th. FolsomAthleticAssociation.org, if you want to support them. To me, I've always been amazed that the Folsom Athletic Association ensures that any kid that wants to play sports in the city of Folsom, regardless of their ability to pay, gets that support through the Folsom Athletic Association. So if you have the ability to support them and support our kids that need some support to play sports in this town, please do so. And I know everybody said, we always have more people that apply for commissions, but thank you to everybody willing to serve. Those that did not get selected tonight, please go to those commissions, read the packets, use your public comment period, cause trouble in those commissions, because there are many, many ways to get things done, and it makes commissioners happy when members of the public show up and they point out things that need more attention or that they may have missed. Public participation is so vital to our city in so many different forms. So thank you to everybody willing to serve, and thank you to those who just show up and make public comment at those commissions and, and do their part that way. So honored to serve, thank you.
Well said, thank you. Councilmember Rorba?
First, I want to acknowledge that our former council member, YK Chalum Chirla, is in the audience, so thank you for showing up, even when you're not supposed to. But I, yes, and congratulations on your swearing in last, in December for our school board. So nice to see you, YK, from that, from the audience. Interesting that we had a quick, I heard several of the council members like the idea that we're building some condos, and that discussion, I think it was item, one of the item, agenda items, allowed me to ask our community development director quite a few questions about how, how, from apart, going from apartments to condos and the pros and benefits of both, pros and cons of both. It might be a discussion in the future for council as far as a priority. I know that the public perception is that we would like to have more condos versus apartments, and the question, the answers that I got from Pam Johns was really the only way to encourage that is by incentivizing developers or builders to do that in certain ways. So I thought it was very fruitful of the conversation we had briefly, but it sounds like that there's consensus here that we would like to see more condos, and so that could be a discussion for the future sometime throughout this year on how to do that. So moving on, I have several different things I want to talk about. First, I thank you, Dan Haverty. You have been wonderful. I've gotten feedback from residents and other staff members, and you were able to kind of step in right at a critical time, and even through the holidays, you were accessible, so I really appreciate that. I really appreciate your heart, and you just showed it too by recognizing employees that have been here and serving, so I would like to see that continue with our new city manager as well. What a great treat. I would have hated to see that our chief's thirty years of dedication to the city go by without acknowledgement, so thank you for that, and also all the other city employees that were mentioned. I think that's just a small, little. I think that's just a small little window into Dan Haverty's heart. He's very solution-oriented, and I appreciate that. One other thing I want, several things I want to follow up on is, Councilmember Rathal, you brought up the homeless encampments on fish and game property. We went from three large encampments to five. It is, they are growing, and unfortunately, we are not able to enforce our ordinance on state property, and that's an obstacle. I have received several emails the last few weeks as well. This is something I've been spearheading since last summer, working with Josh Hoover's office, Assemblyman Josh Hoover. We are looking to set up another meeting. My understanding is there's an agreement that we can make with the state on the ability to enforce our property, or our ordinances on state property. I know Chief Hillman has turned in that, has given that to Fish and Game, and now it's in the city attorney's office, so I'm hoping that we see a resolution on that very, very shortly. This should be a priority of our council going forward. So once we get that ability to enforce our ordinances, no trespassing, things like that, then I do appreciate, Dan Haverty has come up with some creative solutions on how we can bridge the gap on funding. So we're on it, those residents that are paying attention, I appreciate Justin Rathal bringing this back around as well. It sounds like there's consensus here, this is a priority of ours, and hopefully we can get that cleaned out. And then, so economic development, Sarah and I, or the mayor and I are going to be in another meeting on Thursday with a couple stakeholders, talking about economic development and revenue options for the city. There are different ways besides a sales tax measure, it's to improve our finances, it's also increasing our sales tax base, amongst other things. So I'm so happy that we're keeping that conversation going, and it's just so important and what's critical to moving our city forward, to funding all the fun things that we want to do, not even just fun things, but essential services that we need in the city. So that's definitely a priority of mine going forward. As Sarah, we briefly mentioned, just registered for cap to cap in May, and one of, we were able to pick two areas of interest, one of mine was civic amenities, and so there'll be a little bit of a focus on that, meetings I can go to, and, you know, it's a, it's, I can't read my writing. This is a way to engage our civic assets that we do have in our, in our amenities, explore how we can activate that, and activate our public spaces, our parks, our arts, and, you know, we just put up the Johnny Cash pic, how we can engage those, our gardens, our trails, how they can be an integral part of our commerce to make our city financially stable going forward. So I think every little thing we can do is going to be positive, so that was one of my focuses. And the other one was transportation, and this probably doesn't need a lot of conversation, but how we can advocate for federal grants, how we can work towards making sure we build the infrastructure that supports our city and region-wide, and so, and to help economic growth going forward, so that's a huge priority for myself and I think for our city going forward. So those are some things that I'm working on, and I just hope everyone had a great holiday season, is very rested, and here we go, what a great year we're going to have, so thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Leary.
Well, a lot has already been said this evening, so I'm going to try and keep this short, but I do have quite a few thank yous here, and I really appreciate the work that the police department has done, particularly in intervening in the activities of some of the youth on motorcycles throughout our town. There've been some significant problems, they've become a regular conversation on some of the Facebook pages, and I think the police has been doing a very good and sensitive job about dealing with these issues, and as well as, you know, the problems with, I guess they're snatch and grab kinds of crimes that are taking place at the outlets, Palladio and other areas of town. I also want to thank all of the departments for the work. I know a lot of them have been working pretty short-staffed, and I would like to hear from the departments, and sorry that I mentioned the cert program earlier, it's another one people could volunteer for, but I'd like to hear from the departments about what kinds of volunteer they might be able to use to engage more of the people in our community. It's clear we have a lot of people that want to do some work for the city, and that's just sort of a project on, down the line, that I'd like to take a look at. I want to, you know, Commissioner, or Councilmember Rathal mentioned Heart, and they've been doing a great job, but I also want to give a nod to Jake's Journey Home for the work that they've done in getting a lot of our people housed and into intervention programs. It's, if we didn't have these volunteer organizations, nonprofits, I think would be further behind in addressing the problem of homelessness and the issues that go along with it. I was also at the same conference with Councilmember Rathal, with our district attorney. I learned a lot, and it was great to see our police officers there participating in it, and Sergeant Kinepa did a great job on the fentanyl program. I do want to bring it to people's attention, there are other gateway drugs, and I think that I'd like to encourage people to take a look into that, because sometimes, you know, the young people are either using alcohol, which is clearly available to everybody, but, you know, moving into the pills, and that's how they end up with fentanyl in their systems instead of what they think they're getting. So it's something that I think that we can help kind of people identify and move forward with dealing with before they end up in a tragic situation. Excuse me. The, so I'd like to thank the staff, because I know there are a lot of public inquiries coming in, and I particularly like to thank Mayor Aquino for helping me with some issues in my district, and there are a lot of staff members who've, who are on the front lines who have initiated the process, and there's some, some things that are more difficult to deal with, and I think it's important that we engage with the staff and with the community in dealing with those. And I'd like to thank our Assistant City Manager for his guidance and intervention as needed in helping us learn our jobs as council members and set up some educational sessions to help us become better informed and better leaders. So I think that is it, and I hope you're all having a great New Year, and I'm looking forward to working with all of you on the commissions. So with that, I will close.
Great, thank you. And I would just like to share that Milton Neshick, known to his friends as Mick, passed away peacefully at home on January 5th at the age of 94. Although most Folsom residents won't recognize that name, they undoubtedly know the name Kikoman, and Mick is the man who helped bring Kikoman to Folsom. Mick grew up in Wisconsin, attended college and law school there, and was practicing law in 1973 when Kikoman opened its first U.S. plant in Walworth, Wisconsin. That was the beginning of a long, close relationship between Mick and Kikoman that lasted until his death. He served as a board member and their general counsel, and in 2018 was awarded the Order of the Rising Sun by the Emperor of Japan for promoting Japanese-American business relations. Kikoman opened its 95,000-square-foot Folsom factory with 29 employees in 1998. Mick said at the time, "We did an extensive search for plant sites in the Western U.S. Most were eliminated due to inadequate water. Soy sauce needs good, clear water, like the pure mountain water of Folsom Lake." On behalf of the city of Folsom, I want to extend our sincerest condolences to Mick's wife Nancy and the entire Neshick family. Mick was a great friend and fan of Folsom. His contributions to our city will be felt for years to come, and we will adjourn in his memory. Thank you, good night.